Deputy Mayor Venice.
Here.
Councilor Danuski.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilwoman Herbig.
Here.
Councilwoman Curtis.
Present.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, this would work. If I could just make it bigger. There we go. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes out of respect for those who do. And will a clerk please call the first person?
Karen McFadden.
I'm Karen McFadden, the old gray mayor. 19604 66th Avenue Northeast, Kenmore. Tonight, I want you to do something that I know is very hard to do. Changing how you plan to proceed in developing the ball field complex at St. Edward State Park to envisioning a better location, either with the school district or possibly at a central downtown location such as Lake Point or another mixed-use location. Many here tonight are not opposed to ball fields, but just feel very strongly that the pastoral setting of St. Edward is not suitable for bat-destroying lights, noise, and artificial turf. Could you please be brave and bold and adjust your thinking and planning to a more suitable location? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden.
Phyllis Finley.
Phyllis Finley, 5962 Northeast Arrowhead Drive in Kenmore. So, don't start the clock yet, please. I can't tell really if I'm being listened to, if people are working on computers and I just...
I was writing your name down.
Okay, great. Yeah, I didn't know that, so I just wanted to wait until people were listening. I would like us to replace some of the narratives that we've been using for a year and a half with some that are more accurate and open-ended. Repeating them doesn't make them valid, it makes them familiar. And I've kind of been thinking of five of them in particular. Number one, artificial turfs are necessary for player's safety. Really, grass fields and artificial turfs can be safe or unsafe. Number two, promoting the continuation of a singular grass field at St. Edward's is encouraging children to be inactive. Really, there are many ways to be active. Organized sports is one way. Number three, Kenmore needs its own ball field. We're so little, really, we want our own ball field. Number four, North Shore Little League needs more fields and St. Edward State Park is the only option. Really, the park is only going to offer two. A partnership with the school district or in some other multi-use zoned place could offer more. Isn't that the objective? Number five, we will still have access to the fields once they're artificially turfed, and so will our dogs. Then why is it that every time I'm at a field lately that has artificial turf, there are signs on the chain-linked fence that say "No Dogs Allowed" or, and/or "Field Closed, Keep Out"? Maybe Kenmore's policy will be different. I spent the weekend at Little League tournaments in Woodinville and my morning today at St. Edward's. What a jarring juxtaposition. Finally, as a teacher, I was evaluated on what my students knew. How would the city of Kenmore be evaluated if every resident was tested to find out what they really knew about the ball field proposal? Three questions. How many would know that a quarter of a million dollars had already been invested? How many would know that they will be contributing upwards of $4,000,000 or $5,000,000 of their tax money primarily, but not exclusively, for Little League? How many would know that every 10 years, about $1 million of their tax money would be spent to replace the artificial turf with the old one filling up a landfill? If I were the teacher and Kenmore residents were the students and they couldn't pass those three questions, I would be poorly evaluated. How can the city of Kenmore make sure that the residents of Kenmore have all of the answers to this proposal? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Karina File.
Hi, I'm Karina File. I'm a resident of Kenmore. And I was overviewing some of the scheduled matter that's going to be reviewed tonight. And I was looking at some of the recommendations on the Morelands Park project and things that are looking at being crossed out or possibly eliminated for that project. And I wonder if the city is interested in looking into park partners or joint efforts in supporting of a development of the plan or sponsoring of things that could support that park development, building project. Also, I'm in support of the implementation of the Safe Sidewalks Plan, multi-modal transportation, and getting to know some of our local neighbors a lot over the weekend and going door-to-door. There's a lot of new residents we have in Kenmore, which is very exciting. But what I'm also hearing is that there's a lot of concern over the ability to walk safely to downtown Kenmore and accessing the waterfront. Also, bike safety for children, especially along 73rd, that stretch between the Kenmore Elementary School and the junior high school and that passes by the St. Edward State Park, not State Park, excuse me, Swamp Creek Park. So, that's a concern of citizens. And otherwise, there is an item code ordinance change recommendations that is on the schedule for tonight. And I noticed that in one of those, section A, part number eight, has an exclusion for outdoor storage. And many persons are using their bicycles to access our community and multi routes of transportation. And with more of our multi-family development housing going up and around, there are more bikes to be had. Many bikes are stored on decks or underneath stairwells. I wonder if that can be an exemption in that code for Kenmore. And other than that, Friday afternoon from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., there's a family and community Kenmore Ball Field Pride Gathering. It's a picnic and a just nice supportive family community event. And if anybody would like to come, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. File.
John Hendrickson.
Good evening, John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. I'd like to encourage the council regarding the St. Ed's Ball Field project to step back and try to think about what is really in the long-term good that you can do with this development up there. $4.8 million, is this a good investment at St. Ed's where you're saying we're going to have two fields, but there are two fields to look at when you drive by? But there are only really one field for most everybody to play on. The two fields are only for kids 10 years old and younger, right? So, $4.8 million. You know, for that kind of money, you want to put into an asset that you own. And Lake Point has now presented itself. And on April 19th, I think it was, the developer came in here and they're saying that they want to have public space out on the waterfront there. And they're dangling that out there. And they also said they wanted to have a public-private partnership with the city. And we know what that means. That means they want the same tax, 12 years tax-free that we gave to these guys across the street. They don't pay taxes for 12 years on the residential property. It's huge money. And I would give it to them. We want to, the time is now, they're offering it to you now. And that's where we want, we want a waterfront park. We could have a grass ball field. If they're not going to, they're not going to build out on all the land out there, they don't want to pay for the pilings. We should acquire that land, put pilings in ourselves, put pilings in for, out over the water to the extent that we can. You know, I researched it and I was, I was told that geologists say that the lake bed sediment is very solid. So, you could be putting pilings, while they're going to be paying for pilings, you can have those guys put pilings in for us in a much more solid ground. And baseball, football, tennis, all these things, long-term. But if you're going to just throw $4.8 million away up at St. Ed's, how do you ever expect us to be able to do things like that when the opportunities present themselves? St. Ed's is a pollution discharge area. In your own environmental study, the two roads that come in from Bastier and St. Ed's are dumping oil. That's going to increase in the future. The thing you could do in your project is put in a grass field and say, hey, how do I improve this drainage? Improve it for all the future increase in pollution that's coming, that right now goes into that wetland to the south and runs down the stream 0226 into the lake. And to have that same system, take all the fertilizer for a good grass field and improve it, even with growth in the future, okay? Have natural grass, natural light, respect that it's a biodiversity corridor.
Mayor, we're at three minutes.
St. Ed's, Big Finn Hill, Denny Park, all connected as a biodiversity corridor recognized by the state. Your project is going to degrade it.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson.
There's no one else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else? Thank you for your comments, Ms. McFadden, Ms. Henry. We thank you for your comments on the ball fields. And Mr. Hendrickson. And Ms. File, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Spencer Square South update. Mr. Hampson and Samantha Loyak.
Good evening, ladies and councilmen. Have to learn the new microphones.
You do.
They sound good.
Yeah, no more static.
Yep. That's good. So, tonight, we have an update on the Spencer Square South project. So, as you may remember, the city divvied up the commercial portion of the Kenmore Village property into seven parcels, sold one parcel to Kenmore Camera. We retained three parcels, excuse me, four parcels, including the post office, and sold two parcels to Main Street LLC in 2015. And then also in 2015, we entered into a development agreement with Main Street. And the development agreement had a commercial mixed-use building with structured parking, mixed-use on the first floor, 20,000 square foot of medical, and four stories of residential above it. And that's the Link Building that's located on parcel D. And so, the Link Building is under, has been constructed. The tenant improvement is underway for the tenant that's going to occupy the first floor, ground floor. The development agreement also had considerations for parcel B and the optional parcel C. So, Main Street did purchase parcel B, but the development agreement and site plan didn't have specifics on what that building would look like and with the understanding that when it was designed, it would come back for review from us. And so, the original development agreement included a 20,000 square foot commercial building. At one point, there was some discussion about what that building would be used for, and it could have been fitness at one time. And our parking analysis that we received during that time did include that 20,000 square foot being used as a fitness building. The optional property was included in the purchase and sale agreement with the Main Street that if they can secure a sit-down lease with a sit-down, excuse me, secure a lease with a sit-down restaurant for five years, that they could execute an option to purchase the restaurant parcel. The purchase and sale agreement only had a requirement that the restaurant be a minimum of 4,000 square feet. And so, similarly with the commercial building, the restaurant building wasn't detailed in the development agreement and site plan, with the understanding of when those were developed, they would come back in for a review to meet design standards and city codes. The development agreement also considered deviations from the development agreement. And if there were going to be any deviations from code, that would require a development agreement amendment. And so, Main Street, as we brought to you a couple weeks or maybe a month ago, had some changes in their design. But their, their goal now is to meet code and not have to do any development agreement amendments. And so, we have received some preliminary documents for the pre-application, which generally looked like the design is going to comply with code. We recently received a submittal for the modification on the site plan. And we haven't started the review, but as we get through that, we're going to be making sure that what they have submitted complies to code, so in order to avoid a development agreement amendment. And if there are any deviations that we decide are needed going forward, then it definitely would be a development agreement amendment that would have to come back for public hearing and ultimately council's approval.
So, as Brian mentioned, he gave you a lot of the background information and where we are today. And just to expand upon that, on May 1st of this year, there was a special city council meeting and there was a presentation by Main Street. So, you all provided feedback to Main Street. And then they began revising their proposal and they submitted for a pre-application meeting. The pre-application meeting is Development Services' first step prior to submitting a land use application. So, their meeting took place on June 1st and staff provided comments to them on June 8th. And then they began, they began revising their proposal and preparing it for a submittal. At the time we prepared the agenda, we had not received their submittal. So, that was on June 26th when we began, when we prepared the agenda. And then on June 30th, they made application. And the application is for a revision to the site plan. And so, it would be a major modification to the site plan. They are not applying for a development agreement amendment because they are proposing to meet code. But they still have to do a major modification to the site plan because we're going back and changing the findings, conditions, and, or findings, conclusions, and conditions of approval document. So, as you've seen earlier this evening, Main Street hosted an open house just for, you know, the purpose of public participation. And as we process the application, there will be a 21-day public comment period. And we are going to go through some of the drawings with you this evening, but keep in mind, this PowerPoint was prepared before their submittal. So, while it's, while they're close, these are not the actual design drawings, but they're very close to what was submitted.
So, a couple major components that Main Street showed the council in the May 1st presentation that may have warranted a couple development agreement amendments were parking and use. So, the use along 68 was originally shown as a live-or-work unit. And as our, our code doesn't allow anything over, is it 20%? I think it's 20% of the ground floor to be residential along the street frontage. And so, this, you'll see this proposal from Main Street has commercial along the ground floor on, along 68. So, that element is consistent with our, our code. The parking, Main Street, you may recall that the, all these parkings have a shared parking agreement. And so, these properties from the, from the Link, well, the Links actually excluded. So, from Kenmore Camera, the post office, the restaurant pad, the commercial pad, the town green have a shared parking agreement with all the properties. And so, with the requirement to meet code, Main Street submitted a traffic analysis. We haven't reviewed it yet, but we're going to take a look at that and make sure that the, the submittal meets the code and, and all of the shared parking agreements. And also, and as an extra layer, we are going to have a third-party traffic engineer take a look at it. So, to be in addition to our traffic engineer who could, you know, we typically just have our, our traffic engineer take a look at it. We just want to be double and triple sure that what the Main Street is proposing, one meets code and two theoretically could work. And so, from, again, from what we're seeing, we're not seeing any code deviations. The, the units along the town square on the ground level, we saw at the May 1st meeting, they were a live-or-work unit. And so, those are still being proposed as a live-or-work unit. But that meets our code because our code allows residential on the ground floor as long as it's not on the frontage. Right. So, this plan's a little bit confusing because it shows the ground floor of the live-or-work unit, but also to keep in mind on that ground floor, the parking garage, there's parking underneath the building. And so, the, the theory is that the building is going to park itself and so the residents will have parking underneath it. And the, the live-or-work units will have their own parking garage. And so, it's, it's actually more parking than previously was being provided in the development agreement. The intensity of the previous tenant, which could have been a fitness, as was calculated in the traffic analysis, provided, required a lot more parking than this proposal. So, theoretically, there's going to be more parking that's available to people throughout the day.
Hey, Brian. Along 68th Avenue, ground floor, street level, can you talk about the 80/20 rule?
Sure. Let's go back to that last slide that you're on. So, our code requires at least 80% of the ground floor on 68th to be commercial and allows up to 20% to be residential. And so, while Main Street's proposing the lower units to be commercial, they could calculate up to 20% of that to be residential. So, you could have a ground floor unit along 68. Also, looking at this view, the previous slide, or excuse me, the previous presentation that Main Street provided on May 1st didn't show an entrance to the retail and the commercial space off 68th. So, this, this now shows two entrances, one off of 68th and one also around the south of the building. And what's really interesting about the south of the building is the pedestrian connectivity from 68th down to the town square. And Main Street really wants to make that really pedestrian-friendly and also have some other elements, patio seating and better landscaping than what we have out there now. What we have out there now is just minimum to cover, you know, the cooling equipment units and whatnot, but it could be really fixed up to be a good circular connectivity. Similarly, what we saw on the north side of this commercial building on the development agreement was the building was almost being built up to the property line. So, it could have been another boxier type feel. But what we're seeing in this proposal is, is the ground floor level is actually stepped back roughly 15 or 20 feet from the property line. So, it gives them more openness on that north side in between the commercial building and the Link. And it looks like there's some patio seating that's available out there. And I'm not sure if that's for the residents or the, or the commercial establishments, but either way, I think it's a really good, open, airy feeling that helps you get, you know, feel so boxed in in the canyon going through there. The, there's some concern about the front, frontage walkway in front of the commercial property, but, you know, when it all shakes out at the end, it's going to meet code. And so, we're going to talk to Main Street about how we could fix this up a little bit, maybe adding another stairway or something that goes down into 68 to make it more noticeable that it's an entrance. Moving on to the restaurant pad. So, the restaurant pad is different from the development agreement in that it includes a 3,000 square foot office space that's on the west side of, attached to the restaurant itself. And so, the, the restaurant is approximately 5,000 square feet. It's going to be fronting onto the town green and really resemble our hangar building. And from what I understand, you know, there's going to be outside seating and spillage onto the town square. And our development agreement does allow for that extra spillage onto the town square. There's some additional work that Main Street will have to do to that western portion of the unfinished town square property. So, here's a view of the, the new office space that's on the west side of the residential building, but it really opens up to that 67th corner and 181st with a lot of clear story and windows. This is a general comparison of the development agreement and the current proposal based on uses and parking. So, the commercial property, and this does not include the Link Building, this is just the commercial property that hasn't been constructed yet, consisted of a 20,000 square foot fitness building. It could have been a fitness or it could have been a commercial. The current proposal is 2,400 square feet, 2,3900 square feet of commercial, and 1,800 square foot of retail, 24 units to 29 units of residential and three stories. The reason there's a 24 to 29 and 2,400 to 3,900 square foot of commercial is because of the live-or-work units down on the ground floor adjacent to the town square building. So, as you can see, there's still a substantial amount of commercial that's being provided on the site, 39, up to 3,900 square feet could be for commercial and another 1,800 for retail. So, it's still a good amount of commercial. The restaurant pad, again, the deviation from the development agreement is the additional office space that's included in it. But the, the proposed use and size of the restaurant pad complies with our code. And similarly, so does a commercial property. And so, I think it's pretty important to point out that the proposal that the Main Street is providing, it complies to our code. So, that's, you know, that's our downtown vision. That's what is in our downtown plan. It's what's in our comprehensive plan. And so, what they're proposing meets code. And now, when we get to the parking, the development agreement had 138 stalls on these properties, but that did not include the Link Building. The current proposal has 134 shared stalls. So... The current proposal has 134 shared stalls. So, you know, four stalls less than what was on the development agreement. And again, it's less intensity. So possibly there could be more parking. The 30, and there's additional 35 stalls that are under the, the commercial building that'll be for their tenants. And so again, we're going to require that the traffic analysis is done and we review it and then it meets code to, to not require a development agreement amendment. This is the, yeah, Rob.
Your Honor and counsel, from a process standpoint, one thing we did is we reached out to the neighboring commercial property owners and tenants, let them know about this latest plan, tonight's open house and tonight's council meeting. The owners of Kenmore Camera are here tonight and we've met with them. I think their biggest concern is the parking issue. And we agreed to get them a copy of the parking study that was completed. Like Brian said, we're using belt, belt and suspenders approach on the parking. We're not only having our own in-house civil design engineer look at it, but we're also going to hire our own consultant to go over the plan. That said, that plan is trying to predict the future. And so a lot of it is theoretical. And so when we met with the Donavons today, the owners of Kenmore Camera, we also talked about operational things we can do to help with the parking issue, including signage and off-site parking for employees, things like that. So this conversation we're having with Kenmore Camera and surrounding commercial property owners for that matter continues to be a work in progress. So we are very mindful of the parking, the parking issue. The parking study needs to be a strong study that says yes, that these new improvements are parked adequately. So those are just some of my thoughts on that, on, on the parking issue. If they meet, if the parking study does meet the requirements of our civil engineer and also of our consultant, and, and the entire project appears to meet code, then, then we can move forward. But it's something that we're going to continue to be mindful of, not only now during the permitting process, but once the project is built.
So I think it's important to point out the public improvements and benefits that Main Street provided through the development agreement. And here's some statuses of where those are. So the developer is going to be sponsoring community events in the town square and also providing wayfinding signage along 68th. But the things that they have done, provided the on-street parking and restriping on 68th. They reconstructed the entrance at 181st and 67th Avenue Northeast. And similar to what Rob was saying about keeping an eye on the parking and stuff, we're going to keep an eye on this, this intersection. And what you see out there right now may not be the end product. Main Street undergrounded the overhead power lines along 68th and also in between their property and the Kenmore Camera property, which weren't required by code. They're providing the accessible parking that's going to be required for our town square building and also the garbage location and services for the town square. Right now, it's in a temporary location on the restaurant pad, but when they construct the commercial building, it'll be within the commercial building. Any questions? I mean, Samantha, do you have anything else that I forgot to mention?
Wasn't there, did I hear something about a clock at some point? Councilmember Smith.
Thanks for the update. I have a few questions, but I'll, I'll just ask a couple because I'm sure there's other questions that are coming. First, I think it looks great. I think it's, looks a lot better than what we saw a few months ago and, and seems to be closer to what we were thinking. I do have a question with regards to the parking. How does the, the parking agreement factor in the post office site that the city owns? And do the easements on that site restrict the ability to increase the, the parking utility of the site? And, and then I have a kind of a follow-up to that.
So the park, the post office site is part of the shared parking agreement and reciprocal grant easement link agreement between all the parties. And so the post office site is available for parking on that site. There are possibilities of increasing the parking within that area. We're currently going to be doing a restriping of that property and are reaching out to the surrounding businesses for some input on that.
So since we own the post office and we have a, clearly an interest in making sure that that part of it also is maintained for future use, not knowing what would ever happen to that structure. If we were to have that, or that were ever to be redeveloped at some point, does it have the ability to have any structured parking within that? Or do the other businesses have full access to the existing number of parking spaces that are there now? And would that have to be retained in any future long-term plans?
So there always, there isn't a possibility you could reopen the reciprocal grant easement agreement between the parties and you could change the language that's in it. But without doing that, the, the post office would have to, if it was redeveloped, would have to provide equal to the amount of parking stalls that it has now that's in the shared parking agreement. Let's say that there's 20 stalls out there now that, that can be utilized for that. They could do that. If they provide any additional structured parking, that could be looked at in excess of the parking agreement. Similarly to the commercial building that Main Street is proposing, we're looking at the overall parking that was included in the, the grant easement, the parking easement. And anything above and beyond that is really for them to dedicate for their tenants.
Okay. And then lastly, on the, on the parking, sticking with the parking theme here, with the, you've got on the one slide, it has the development agreement and it shows 138 stalls and it says current proposal, 134 plus 35 stalls for tenants of the commercial. If, it, does that 100, I'm, I'm trying to understand where the parking requirement for the rental units, the residential units, how does that factor into the 134? And if, if you take off, if you make it, equalize it to the 138 in the development agreement, that would be 31 additional stalls. And, and it also looks like that they could have up to 29 residential units. So knowing that there was not an original plan of, of so many residential units in that, on that site, is it reasonable to assume that the, the actual nighttime use, when the town green is used and when residential occupants are home, would exceed that, that 1.06 or whatever it factors out to?
So these numbers here are what they're proposing and what they showed in the development agreement. And we haven't gotten into the requirements and how many parking are going to be required to be provided for every use. But we will, and we'll get into that. I'm not sure if that's a 1.6 or the 1.9 or 1.1 or 0.9. So we'll take a look at that when we get there. What was the part of your question? I forgot the...
Well, yeah, I guess where, where I was trying to, I was trying to understand because the intensity, I, I like the plan. I just, I want to make sure that we've preserved enough adequate parking. And I feel like there's a strong probability with 29 units, residential units, that a lot of the, the parking that is non-structured will be, will be utilized by residents as living there rather than...
The shared parking agreement doesn't allow for overnight parking. And so if there's somebody that's parking there from the residential overnight, it's going to be enforceable by the parties of interest in the shared parking agreement. You know, if it's somebody that's parking there during the day that is utilizing their apartment, that's going to be illegal with the shared parking agreement. They're just not going to be able to park a separate or second or multiple vehicles in the shared parking area overnight.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Counselor Dusky.
Yeah, I like this plan quite a bit more.
Boom. Better than the other one. I do like the commercial on 68th. Hopefully we get the, the work instead of the live facing the town square. They still need to exercise a lease before they can do the restaurant building. Is that correct?
That's correct. The purchase and sale agreement requires that they have a lease with the sit-down restaurant for five-year, a five-year lease with the restaurant before they can exercise the option to purchase the property. And that deadline is the end of October.
And have you heard if they've secured a tenant?
They have a letter of intent signed with the tenant. And Main Street, do you want to provide any additional information about this potential tenant? You can come on up if you want, if it's okay with the mayor and the council.
But we're not forcing you.
That's okay. I can give a, I do have permission to give a little bit of information. So it's a Seattle restaurateur that has about 10 locations currently in Seattle, Seattle area. They're all kind of individually themed, so it's not a chain. And this will be a new concept they're doing in Kenmore. It's contemporary, family-friendly. It will have a bar scene, but that's not the focus. They really want to embrace the town green, a lot of indoor-outdoor space with a big patio. The food is like pizza, sandwiches, burgers, salads, all locally-sourced. That's kind of what they, and I think they're going to have a theme around seaplanes too. So that's, that's kind of what I know.
Thank you.
Sure.
But no clock.
We're working on that.
Okay. I like that.
So, so your honor, can I talk about the clock for a second?
Sure. I'd love to hear about the clock.
So we've been just, it's a brand-new idea, well, I don't know if it's a brand-new idea, but this latest version of it is kind of a new idea. And something we've been kind of tossing around internally, but thinking about, you know, a lot of real authentic downtowns have a town clock. And I'm kind of thinking Kenmore needs a down, you know, a town clock. And, you know, there's also been talk about a veterans memorial in our downtown area. And I was in a really neat town in central coast of California a few months ago. And they have a, they had a beautiful town clock. And at the base of it was a veterans memorial. So the base of the clock itself made up a veterans memorial. And so I was wondering if there's some sort of a public, private, and nonprofit partnership, a kind of a three-way partnership where we could partner with Main Street, we could partner with the local citizens who want to do a veterans memorial, and then the city and, and install a, a town clock with a veterans memorial theme to it, kind of right near that corner of 67th and 181st or, you know, somewhere in that vicinity. So, so that's what you've, the mayor has meant by a clock. He's, we're kind of tossing that idea around. So...
I'm not giving up. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Since the, the apartments have opened in the Link building and prior to that, the Spencer 68, we've noticed a tremendous amount of increased on-street parking. And the, the concern I had when I toured the Link building was that I found out that the parking is not included in the rent. While we have a requirement for, what is it, 1.6 parking spaces per unit? What was it on those?
If I remember right, the Spencer 68 was 0.9. We, we did a 1.1.
And I was curious as to how many of the tenants are renting those spaces. And I haven't seen any, I mean, having spaces available for the tenants, but then forcing them to pay another $120 for it in addition to their rent. I'm just curious how many of those tenants are paying for that parking and how many of those tenants are using on-street parking that the city is providing.
Maybe Kim can answer the question about the onsite parking. But keep in mind, the street parking wasn't available on 68th prior. So Main Street restriped 68th to provide that on-street parking. And we're seeing a lot of parking riders using that. And so we're planning on enforcing the limitation on the on-street parking. And so right now it's a two-hour parking.
Okay.
A lot of it's not signed yet, but once we get it signed for two-hour parking, then we'll start enforcing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Sperry.
So the two-hour parking, one of the things, I don't know if it could be addressed in the parking study, but if the parking was time-limited, say two hours for the commercial, is that something that could be addressed in the parking study? What the impact of, of time-limiting some of that might be?
Are you talking about time-limiting on-street parking or internal?
Internal.
So time-limited parking is already part of the reciproc, and is it two-hour? Okay. So that would be part of the study.
Thank you. My second question. Brian, you mentioned that they need a major, Main Street needs a major site plan modification. That sounds like a process. I'm wondering if, is that a defined process we have? Or if you could talk a little bit about that or perhaps the city manager?
So the major modification of the site plan, our code sets forth criteria. So it says, when you have a site plan approval, we have a staff report for that. It talks about certain things that, changes that can be made without a major modification and things that cannot be made. So these changes are significant in that we would do a major modification, which means we essentially do the site plan application again. Ideally, this is a lot faster than before because it's, you know, clearly going through what has changed. So they've gone through as part of their submittal materials and outlined essentially the entire staff report and highlighted what has changed with this proposal.
Samantha, is that handled at the staff level? Or is that something the council has to...
It's a type-two decision, so it's administrative.
Thank you.
So on the parking. Just clarification. When we split that property up and Kenmore Camera bought it, I thought that they, they had purchased additional property in front of the store for parking. Is that being calculated in when I, when we see the shared? Or is Kenmore Cameras parking, Kenmore Cameras parking?
It's being calculated in as a shared parking.
They've obviously...
Pardon?
They've obviously agreed with that, right?
They have. They've agreed with the concept early on. But as Rob has mentioned, we're going to kind of revisit that whole shared agreement and maybe look at some additional management techniques that we could utilize for their customers and other commercial customers.
Because they did purchase it, right?
They do. They do. They did. They purchased the property. So they do own the parking that's in front of their building. And I can't remember exactly how many stalls that is.
Yeah, I think it goes out to that driveway, but I don't remember. Okay. Out to the walkway.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Go, go ahead. Brent, you've already asked once, right? Yeah, go ahead. Then we'll go to Brent. Yeah, go ahead, yeah, then we'll go to Brent.
As I recall, um, in the original plan, there was some discussion of view corridors to be able to see Kenmore Camera from sixty-seventh and also from the sixty-eighth, one-hundred-and-eighty-first intersection. And how is this construction here impacting those, the visibility of Kenmore Camera from those two angles?
So you do remember correctly, there are two vi- view corridors from the, the elevation frontage of Kenmore Camera that align with the driveway at sixty-seventh and the old driveway that was near the town square. And so those are view corridors that have to be maintained. And so Main Street has to, um, satisfy those requirements. One thing that wasn't included in our slideshow, but was included in the, uh, permit, um, um, application, was that Main Street took perspectives throughout the city on what those view corridors could look like. And so they took some shots along, um, State Route five-twenty-two, yeah, by Jimmy John's, where clearly you couldn't see it, but then as you got closer to sixty-seventh Avenue, you could actually see, um, Kenmore Camera through that view corridor on five-twenty-two. And then similarly, as you came around, um, uh, sixty-eighth on, on, um, in front of Riley, how you could see, um, the right side of Kenmore Camera through that, that east view corridor. And as you came along in front of, um, the town square, um, what that view corridor looked like. So you're right, there was view corridors, and they do have to maintain, um, those easements.
Councilor Smith?
Thank you. Um, my question is regarding, um, it's actually the, the best perspective is on A-ten, um, from the architectural plans. But, um, it has to do with the residential, commercial, uh, work-live unit at the, uh, main level, at the, at grade level. And I know that it was mentioned that we wanna increase the circular flow pattern around the north side of the pavilion and tie it into the town green. And I guess my only thought would be it would make, it would make it much more desirable and more appealing if we're gonna do that, if we knew that those were going to be commercial units. Um, and since we know that the economics probably don't work as well for the commercial side, and it's a high probability of residential occupancy, I think it actually makes that less appealing in a lot of ways to have residential units right there. And it makes me less apt to want to tie it together.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda then is, uh, Kenmore Business Incubator update. Ms. Owsley, just the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to give you a, a brief update on the Kenmore Business Incubator. And as you know, this program has been in existence since two thousand thirteen. And this has been really a time of, of exciting growth for this program. Uh, I'm joined tonight by our program consultant, Corey Hanson, who is a Kenmore resident now. And also, uh, one of the newer companies that we've been working with, Rebecca Weston of Red Barn Engineering is with us and, uh, joined by Eddie Weston.
My number two.
And, um, whenever a, a company joins the incubator, whether or not they're a virtual company or they're, they're in-house, um, they have their logo, uh, in the entryway. And so this, this is about to go into the entryway of the incubator. But, uh, the, the last time that we had a chance to really update the council was in the spring of two thousand sixteen. So some, some things have been, uh, notable, uh, that have happened in, in, during that period of time. And, uh, we'd like to highlight them for you. One of the things that, that, uh, happened, and it, it came up pretty suddenly, uh, when the Port of Seattle notified us and, um, most of the other cities in King County that they had started a Economic Development Partnership Program with all the cities, uh, except for Seattle and, and Sea-Tech, uh, where they have major facilities. This has been a, a really, uh, wonderful thing. It's, it's really extended the, the port's reach into cities that, that aren't at the center of a, an airport or a, a, uh, marine port. Each city was given, uh, grant money based on a per capita formula. Kenmore got twenty-one thousand, five hundred. There was a fifty percent match, uh, requirement for that. And one of the things that we used the, the grant money for was a, um, two sessions of business acceleration training. And, and we'll talk about that more in, in, uh, in a few minutes. But, uh, that has, that has been really successful, as, as you'll hear. The first year of this program, because the port is on a July-to-June fiscal year, has, has just completed. And, uh, is, I was at a meeting a week or two ago with a, a number of other cities who had taken advantage of, of the grant. And for most of them, they said, you know, this, this gave us that little bit of extra resource that we could do something that we'd been talking about doing for a long time. And, uh, guess what the City of Auburn did? They started an incubator program. I think it goes back to that presentation that we did to Sound Cities. And the mayor of Auburn was there, and I think that piqued her interest quite, quite a lot. Uh, the, the program is continuing, uh, from, from the port. And so, uh, we'll be submitting our, our proposal, uh, later this month. I'll, I'll just mention briefly too, that, that, um, this is separate from the incubator budget. So, uh, even though, um, Corey was, was involved in, in the, uh, business training, it is, it is a separate line item, uh, in, in our budget. The other thing that we use the port money for is for some updated professional photography for, um, media relations and marketing material. And so, uh, we were able to get, uh, those updated photos because, you know, a lot has changed around here, uh, in, in the last few years. And so, uh, we're using a number of those photos for a new, uh, marketing piece that's geared toward visitors and recreation, which is very much in line with, with the port's mission. As a result of that training and, and other factors, we've seen quite a jump in, in the number of, of, uh, businesses we're working with, particularly in our virtual, uh, program. The last time that we briefed you, in the, in the spring of two thousand sixteen, we were working with five, uh, virtual clients, and now we're working with eleven. Uh, and, uh, and a lot of that is, is attributable to the, um, to the training that they had. Uh, also, uh, this year, earlier this year, the council approved, uh, an arrangement with Comcast for upgraded, uh, internet, high-speed internet service to the city hall, to the hangar, and to the incubator. And so that has, uh, that's been a, a very good improvement for our companies who are at the facility. So, uh, a little bit more about that program. And actually, we're working with seventeen companies now, total. That's the most that we've ever had at one time that we're working with. So the, the training, uh, for the, uh, that was partially funded by the Port of Seattle, was for businesses that had good potential for increasing their revenue and, uh, and activity. And, uh, it helped us reach out to some businesses who had not been really on our radar screen. Uh, we had a law firm, we had real estate companies, we had restaurateurs. Uh, in, in the two groups, one was in the fall of sixteen, and the, and then, uh, again, in the winter earlier this year. So I'll let Corey talk a bit about how that, how that training came about.
Sure. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's always kinda fun, because it's kinda like bragging about your children. You know, it's a real opportunity to share how wonderful and beautiful they are and everything else. And, and the truth is, um, one of the things that's important to determine is, so when we're talking about virtual, these are existing Kenmore area businesses. And, uh, you know, the, the largest one is, uh, two-and-a-half million dollars. There's another one that's a million point-three. And so it's not about space. It's about building capacity and, uh, growing the businesses here in Kenmore. And, and we've got a really lot of wonderful businesses here, a lot more than, than even you led me to believe when we first talked. So, um, the training is, uh, kinda based on how to really accelerate the growth of businesses, not just, say, get bigger, but, um, accelerate them in developmentally so that they avoid the mistakes that are commonly made in going from one stage of business to another. And, uh, so we say that our goal is to get them to where they would be in ten or twenty years and, uh, do it in only two to five. And, uh, even, even since, uh, the training, which, uh, was, uh, October and February, um, we've had some really significant growth from some of these companies, so. One who would like to have been here was, uh, Nancy Zika from Zika Salon. And, um, you know, not to brag, but I will. Uh, they've doubled their revenues in the last two years in just this location. And as of Sunday, um, they took over another salon in the Mill Creek area, which is going to, again, probably double their revenues there, so.
Yeah, she's been one of our virtual clients, you know, for a couple of years?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's a great success story. So, uh, and here are the, here are the two groups. Uh, the, the fall group is on the left, and, uh, Deputy Mayor Van Ness was able to present the completion certificates for the spring group. And he's, there are three red jackets in that photo, and this is one of them. You know, a lot of people, um, assume that if, if it's a business incubator, it must be a tech. It's all tech companies. Well, uh, we have our share of technology companies that, that we've worked with since two thousand thirteen. Uh, but you can see we have a lot of other types of companies as well. All the way from, uh, real estate and, and, uh, real estate development to, uh, an acupuncturist, we worked, worked with an acupuncturist. And, uh, and Rebecca's company, uh, which is, uh, a civil engineering company. And, uh, here's a really cool pie chart that, that depicts that. But this is a kind, good time to hear from, from Rebecca. And actually, Rebecca, uh, has a Red Barn Engineering. And she worked on Kenmore City Hall, uh, when, when she was with KPFF. So maybe you could tell us a little bit about your company and introduce Eddie as well.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and talk first, and then Eddie has a closing statement that he'd like to make. So, um, my company, um, I've always been, for the last ten years, I've been a resident of Breyer. And it was literally about three weeks ago when I went to Master Builders Association because of one of my clients said, you know, you're doing really good. I think you should show up at Master Builders. And I was like, outfit time in. So I ran down to Master Builders, and there is a woman there named Jay. And she said, I think you should meet Corey. And I said, Corey who? So she's like, I'm gonna write his name down, and then you can just talk to him. I think you'd be great. And so, uh, I met Corey less than a week later and talked with him. And I was like, okay, this is what I need right this second. And so, um, the growth of Red Barn is just doing phenomenal. And I'm up on the chart as an engineering firm, but at the same time, I'm modernizing the way that we do business in the engineering world. And I actually view myself more as a technical firm or a technology firm on just the different ways that we're processing data. It's a core belief for me in an engineering firm that we can get costs down, that we can do work a lot more efficient than what we are doing it. I've worked for municipal jobs all the way to more environmental jobs. And every one of them sent, tends to run the same, the same way through the systems. And with technology changing in so many different ways, things like just utilizing how Dropbox works and just seeing the power of how IT no longer is needed. You can just roll things out, and it just is, you just watch the overhead just fall apart. And so I'm so excited that I got to start my firm in two thousand sixteen. And I got to start it in a technological way, and that I don't have to depend on so many things that are ingrained and the old-fashioned way of doing civil engineering. Eddie, do you wanna say what you're most thankful for? You get to press the button. Go ahead. Thank you, City of Kenmore.
Thank you, City of Kenmore.
For letting my mom.
For my mom have a office nearby.
Good job. That's it.
Well, you should probably say why he's thankful for that.
Well, I used to have to commute a long ways. I used to have to work hours at different offices, very long hours away from him. And being so close to home, the other night after I got done working at the incubator, I went and I picked up Kid Valley hamburgers and shakes. And I went down to Logg Boom Park where I met my family. And Eddie's words that he said was, couldn't be a more perfect day. And I thought, well, this wouldn't have happened. So, it's the small things you cherish.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Eddie. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Eddie.
You're welcome.
You know, uh, talk about the twenty-six companies that, that we've worked with since two thousand thirteen. Those twenty-six companies, uh, have been associated with over two-hundred-and-fifty jobs. So there are two-hundred-and-fifty-five people, uh, in our area who can say that they do or have worked for a company that, uh, has been part of the Kenmore Business Incubator, which is, uh, which is pretty cool. Very cool. Here are the companies that are currently at the incubator space. All fit on here. And you see Red Barn down in the, in the corner there. Um, and some of these companies are familiar to you. And, um, all strong Kenmore ties to them. Sometimes I call them, these are our impatient companies.
So I have Five's in-house now?
Yes, yes. They've been there for, for a while. And then the virtual incubator companies that we're working with, you can see that, I, I looked at the slide that I presented, you know, in, in two thousand sixteen. And this one is a lot more crowded with, with, um, logos right now. But again, some of them are brand-new ventures. Others have, are, are pretty well-established, but they, they know that they can benefit from the opportunity to, to work with Corey, uh, which, uh, and with other businesses. Because, uh, the, the virtual program which, and with other businesses, because the, the virtual program is really based now on monthly group sessions, and then you also do individual work with them as, as well. So, they can learn from each other, they can, they can celebrate when things are going well, so that, those are ongoing. And then, here are companies that we have, have worked with, and they've, they've expanded or they've moved on, but we still keep in touch with, with virtually all of them. Anything else you want to say about the companies, Corey?
Nancy Allen's got a question, if it's okay.
Sure.
Thank you. It's the nine companies that have moved on. Are they all still in business, and were any of them able to continue their business in a location in Kenmore?
Silver Kite is, is close by, but, but they had very specific kinds of space needs, because they have a lot of performance-based things. Starting Point is still in business, still around here.
Well, most of them are in business.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they all are.
So, they've succeeded?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else that you want?
But it's been a difficult time finding adequate space, business space, commercial space within the city of Kenmore.
There's, there is one of them on there that we lost specifically because we didn't have space at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
So, here's some, some metrics that you've, you've seen before, but again, this one adds the jobs to it, and, and again, the, we always like to show how the fees that, that businesses pay offset some of the, the costs that, that we incur. So, again, there's that two-hundred-and-fifty-five jobs total since 2013, pretty evenly split between the in-house and the virtual companies. And of course, that's a dynamic phenomenon. You know, sometimes that can go up and down, but, but we've kept pretty good track of, of where the jobs are through the, through the years. And then, you've seen the budget history before. Each biennium, the budget goes down a bit, and we've been a little more successful with, with offsetting that with program revenue. And again, none of this is related to the, the port-sponsored training. We have an advisory group that is awesome, and, and Alex Borromeo, you have met, he's a longtime Kenmore resident, and is actually in the, in the program, but is a very experienced entrepreneur. So, he's on the, the advisory group. Tom Broce is very active in venture investments and in, in helping entrepreneurs. I met him through Rotary, North Shore Rotary, and he's a longtime member there, and he's Bothell resident and affiliated with CFO Solutions. Kokina Dare, most of you know her, Chief of Staff at Bastier University. Angela Kugler, former Planning Commissioner with Digipen, and Ray Mosher, who has recently retired from King County Economic Development. He started the Small Business Awards Program, and I have had a long-time baseball rivalry with him, because he is a Yankees fan and I'm an Orioles fan, so I'll just leave it at that. They're doing a lot better than the Orioles are this year. He doesn't live in Kenmore, but his daughter, son-in-law, and grandson do live in Kenmore. So, we don't impose a, a lot on their time, but, but we ask for their advice and strategic thinking too, because we always like to be thinking ahead for, for this program and, and for what businesses are, are likely to need. So, it's been really great to work with them. And then finally, I wanted to just, just share this, this photo with you, because this was taken earlier this year, and while it doesn't show anywhere near the number of companies that, that we have worked with or that we're working with now, you have a little bit of everyone in this photo, because you have clients who are in-house clients, some who are virtual. We have a couple of people in this, in this photo who were part of the Business Acceleration Training, but, and, and one of them is a Kenmore resident, owns a restaurant in Lake Forest Park, and then there's an attorney in the back, and then Tom Broce, our, one of our advisory committee members is, is there, and, and you can, might even spot a council member in that, in that picture. So, but this is what it's all about, is community, I think, and, and that can mean encouraging and, and collaborating with, with other companies. We, we find that a lot of companies are teaming up on projects or taking advantage of, of others' expertise. And, and they're obviously learning from one another and reinforcing their efforts. And I always like to remind myself, and therefore remind you, about that having that physical presence on that really prominent corner in Kenmore, I, has, has I think, really helped energize that, that part of our downtown. And of course, we're right downstairs from the incubator in this photo at Karen Brewing.
Very good marketing.
It is. It is. But, but I always think of my, my spouse, who, one of her colleagues said, and he has no connection with, with Kenmore at, at all, but he's, he said one day, you know, he'd seen something in the paper, something like that, "So, you know, lots going on in Kenmore. They have an incubator and everything." And I thought that was pretty cool, that, that the word has gotten out. So, with that, we're happy to take any other questions that you might have.
Councilmember Smith.
Thanks for the great report, and I love seeing the budget history, and I know even through this year, we're only partially through it, but it looks like things are going well. Can you tell me how the fee structure works for the virtual businesses?
It's a flat fee, and, and some, Corey, you can speak to this, that sometimes you might see everyone at once, but other times it's a little more spaced out, but that, that provides that monthly group setting, and then, as needed, the individual.
Yeah, so we, we meet monthly here, actually, as a group, and that training is included as a part of it. And then, they also get consulting, like the, the in-house members do, though, you know, with, with almost twenty companies, we're at about, you know, I can meet with them about once every six to eight weeks. So, and, and just to give you an idea, when, when we first were talking about this, and my vision was, if we could get twenty-five companies with average growth goals of two million dollars, you know, that's a fifty-million-dollar growth program. And as it stands right now, we've got seventeen companies with a total growth goals of fifty-seven million. And so, that's an average of three-point-three million dollars per company. So, we're, we're way ahead of even what I'd hoped we could do.
And I, and I just was talking to a graduate of your Business Series class, and I believe he says his revenues are either triple or quadruple, one of those two, since he's taken your class.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's not a standard, but it's, it's not uncommon either.
Councilmembers, Barry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, Rebecca, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I know you're new, but.
I'm all, I'm all good.
Well, I loved all that about cost-cutting, and I thought, "Can you just stay and listen to our next discussion?" So, obviously, you were hoping to, you know, you have some goals with your company, you were hoping to, to get some benefit out of relocating. We've always, already heard about it's benefiting your, your family, which is very, very important. Is, is that something you could talk a little bit about? You know, what, what exactly are you hoping will be the benefits of being in this incubator?
Well, I'm a person that likes to go a zillion miles a minute, and I really don't like to stop. And so, when I got to a place where I can see that, well, your first year, you're like, "Well, am I gonna be successful?" And then, when you roll into your second year, you're like, "Oh, wow."
I am successful, now what?
Now, I'm gonna be successful, and now, how do I control this, even though I have visions to be a large, lot grander than where I'm at? You know, and so, it's like, "Well, I think I need somebody like Corey just to give me the confidence." I sort of have a guess of where I'm going, but every day is different. You get challenges every day, and I think stepping through his three-hundred steps and making sure that I hit every one of those in order to do the acceleration. I've been in other programs, other places where you sort of get the overview. When I was at KPFF, I had a really strong learning. I was an associate there. I got to live it, feel it every day. And then, it was, but all the way along, like, I decided, like, maybe at year five, I would write my own book on how I would streamline, like, "These are how these projects should be done. We don't need to be here from the path." You know, and so now, it's like, "Well, I am so ready to..." I, I spent the last year in my basement, and my boys come down to see me, and I built the machine that I wanted to run. I didn't build the machine that someone else said, "This is the machine you should have. You should buy this program or that program." I said, "You know what? Now, this is how this needs to run." And then, I, as soon as I got to a point where then the profits would just start to pack on because I have an efficient machine, then I was like, "Now, I need, I really do need a mentor," because now it's, "How do I staff the machine?" You know, and I don't want to have a huge amount of staff, because it is so technology-related. So, now you're sort of mixing a really technical world with a really historic world, and those two don't often get together a lot. And so, then I found myself, like, I need a little bit of both. And so, I really want to have an office in Kenmore, I have an eye on a place. I don't know if I need to have, you know, a huge amount of people, because most, my company is gonna run where technology does a good bit of the work. And so, it's gonna be interesting. I like to see how much me and my main partner, how much we can kick out in a month, just the two of us. And it's like, "Well, if I just add another person, now how much can three people do?" Because it's totally different than what it was under a historical firm.
So, you're, you're brand-new into it, and you're already hiring, have an interview to hire another one tomorrow.
I do to hire another main, this will be my first engineer that I'd like to grow into being the Vice President of the company, and where I can grow to do more of the technological... I, I come out as engineering, but my background's in heavily in mathematics and computer science. I was offered a job at the National Security Agency. You know, I've been doing, I did studies for Congress on deep geothermal. So, when it comes time to hit it up with a little bit of power, I'm all for, you know, taking an application, you know, and revolutionizing it, and then pushing it forward.
But she's still being very modest, because she did, what was it, seventy homes last year, and upwards of ten million dollars, many of them, and, and I, I still never remember how many commercial projects.
Well, to be honest, I did seventy, but, you know, some of them are five projects, like five houses, some of them are two-hundred-unit developments, some of them are fifty-unit developments, some of them are a big theater for a prominent school, and, and you're hitting deadlines, like, it has to roll out in fifteen months, it has to be a built building in fifteen months. So, there's, right now, I think I have thirty thousand cubic yards getting taken out of the earth. That is all under my direction. So, I'm like, "Go dump trucks, go." So.
Thanks very much for being with us. And I'm all for some gender balance in, in the incubator, too. It's been, it's been pretty tipped in, in one, one direction for a long time, and so it, it's great to have Rebecca and her associate at the incubator. So, any other questions, but... Thanks for the time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Now, my computer's decided to go to sleep. Okay, next item on the agenda then is a review proposed amendments to the adopted 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water. Mr. Carlinsey and Ms. Gregory, and Ms. Bint, and Ms. Overlees, we got them all.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, councilmembers. I, I want you to know ahead of time that I'm not gonna project anything that is not already in your packet. I'm just going to illustrate the Agenda Bill as we go through it, so that the members of the audience can follow along and see what we're talking about. So, it's, it's not a formal presentation. So, tonight is your opportunity to review some proposed amendments to the adopted CIP Plan. We adopted that 2017-2022 Plan in October of 2016, so you can imagine that some things have probably changed since that time. And I am accompanied with, by Rob, City Manager, and Chris, Public Works Director, and, and Debbie, Community Development Director, who are all here to answer any questions about specific projects as we go through them. Included specifically tonight are amendments to five transportation programs, eight park programs, and two surface water programs. They're listed in summary form on the Agenda Bill, and attached to the Agenda Bill are council agendas for prior meetings where you may have discussed that specific project, just for your reference and, and information. And then Exhibits A through D are the balanced capital improve, Capital Improvement Program Sheets for the different segments, and Exhibits E through H are the projections of project resources. I didn't attach all the project description sheets, but I have them on the desktop if you would like to look at them as, as we go through. So, starting out with transportation, my, the process I was going to recommend is just to go through the, the proposed amendments one by one, project by project, and I'll just introduce it, briefly describe the amendment that we're proposing. If you have questions about that particular project, ask as we go along. Does that, does that work for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, the first transportation project is a sidewalk project, Northeast 202nd. This was a project funded by Safe Routes to School, and you reviewed this project on April 24th, at which time you advised that there could be a potential budget amendment. And at that time, that budget amendment is requested of ninety thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars due to higher bids, some additional design costs, and then there's a little bit of carryover of unspent funds from the prior year. Now, this is a, a project that was funded with over five-hundred thousand dollars of transportation impact fees, and now we have reallocated the complete streets grant to this, to this particular project, and put, kept that five-hundred thousand dollars of impact fees in the Impact Fee Fund. So, that's this particular project. So, again, we need ninety thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars of transportation impact fees to, to complete this project. Are there any questions on, on this project?
Councilmember Harvey?
I'm just gonna reiterate that I hope that we're still protecting that five-hundred thousand dollars, and we'll be using that towards sidewalks or something else related, rather than... and we'll be using that towards sidewalks or something else related, rather than essentially shifting money from sidewalks to something else at a later date.
If you happen to see the transportation impact fee fund projection on Exhibit A, I specifically show that as a separate line item going forward, that the $500,000 was supplanted by the grant so that we can track it independently of the reserve.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Next project is 62nd Avenue Northeast Sidewalk. This was the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant project, also funded with city real estate excise taxes. Again, you reviewed this on April 24th and were advised that a budget amendment would be forthcoming. The current estimate for that budget amendment is $140,430 of real estate excise tax. Are there any questions on this project?
Deputy Mayor?
Wasn't this the one that we had an $800,000 grant and a $15,000 match?
Yes.
And now it's $140,000 match due to increased costs? Is that it?
Correct. And then within that 140 is 99.50 of unspent funds from 2016.
But still, part of the... I don't know. I think, remembered, it was a very small match for the amount of the grant that we had. And what this is telling me is that the project is costing, what, $125,000 more than we expected it to. Is that right?
Yes. Anything else on 62nd?
Nope.
Okay. The next project is Arrowhead Drive Sidewalk. This was a project for which we submitted a grant application for Safe Routes to School. The project was not selected for that grant this year, and the consensus was that we, that would be resubmitted in the next funding cycle. So we have just moved that project out a year. That doesn't affect the CIP a whole lot, but it does affect the budget amendment, which would be forthcoming. So it moves it pretty much out of this biennium or most of the expenses out of this biennium.
One piece of information is that Arrowhead Drive, Chris reminded me that it actually needs to be shifted out two years because it's a two-year grant spend cycle. You and I didn't know that at the time, but Chris provided that additional information. So we'll actually need to shift that out two years.
Okay. All right. We can, we can make that adjustment before we bring forward the final ordinance and CIP amendment. Anything else on Arrowhead? Next is the, what's the name, bridge replacement. This is, this is a big one. Since we last established a budget for that, we now estimate that the budget is going to be approximately $30.6 million to complete, which requires significant additional funding. Now, I'm going to preface that you know next week, we're going, going to discuss this project in great detail with, with John Vicente. And there are a number of considerations for closing that gap. At the time this was prepared, we were anticipating that perhaps there could be another grant resource out in the outer years 2020, 2021, possibility of maybe doing some council manic debt that we could repay with REIT. But as you probably know by now, there's also some cost reduction options that could be considered. So I don't know if you, how you want to go forward right now with the CIP amendment. Are there any questions or anything you'd like to discuss at this time that would give us some, give me some information on how to proceed with the CIP?
Councilmember Curtis?
So I have a question. So if we just leave it as it is, and then we discuss it in more detail and we change our mind, we can always come back and change it again? Or...
Leave it as it is with my recommendation or leave it as it is in the current CIP that's not amended? Either way, we'll do another budget amendment at a later date.
So if we figure out ways to cut the cost of the bridge, then we'll just bring that back in at a later time?
Well, I'd add, we're not adding, we're not recommending that we add additional city resources to the project right now, as we'll get into great detail next Monday. We have options to reduce scope. Before, we were at 0% design when we did this budget. Now we're at 30% design. We know a lot more. And we also know that there is at least another grant program, and we've already talked to their staff, where we think we are likely to get additional grant resources. So I agree with Joanne, you know, change the number now to our 30% recommendation. But I think the key point is, is we're expecting between additional grant funding and maybe some modifications to the project that will bring it within what we can afford and at this point in time, not adding more city money.
I guess maybe I'm asking a different question. So what's our goal tonight? So as we go through each of these things, are we supposed to make a commitment and we're going to say, this is our new CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But if you're more comfortable, if you're more comfortable leaving the budget the way it currently is at 20 million until we have further information, we could do that. Or we could, and again, these, this additional, these additional funds would be out in the outer years, so they wouldn't be affecting the current budget. We could adjust the budget to $30.6 million or the CIP to $30.6 million in the outer years without specifying exactly how that's going to be covered.
My inclination was go with the 30.6, kind of your recommendation.
Okay.
It's the better guess than we had before.
It is.
Then we can keep modifying it as we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, we can guess again once that's 60%. Councilmember Herbig?
I guess my question is, you know, the agenda topics is review proposed amendments. I don't see anywhere us saying that we're approving proposed amendments up today. Are we, is that what we're expected to do?
No, tonight, I would write direction on the amendments.
Okay.
And then based on that direction, I would bring an ordinance to amend the CIP next week.
Then I think it might make sense just to see what shakes out next Monday as far as that goes, and then roll it all in together and approve that at a later date. Because we're not going to be approving this next Monday, right?
We could actually approve it the following week.
Yeah, I mean, that might make a little sense, because then we'll have a full discussion about how we want to handle the $9 million on, on the bridge, and then we can just roll that all in and get it done all at once.
Sure. Yeah, that would be fine. So we'll take that information after next week and incorporate that into the amendment and bring it back the following week.
Deputy Mayor?
As I recall in our conversation with John Vicente, there's a pretty hefty contingency portion in that 30 million that could, you say 30 million now at 30%. It could all be up to 35 million before we're all done. But there's a contingency in there that could absorb some of that increased cost. Is that true?
Within that 30 million number, we have inflation, so 6% a year for inflation. We're planning to go to construction in 2019. We have a design contingency and a construction contingency. So as you will see next week, we have been incredibly conservative with the bridge cost estimates. And part of our challenge right now is, is bidding climate, things, you know, costs are a little unpredictable. We have a lot of work out in the Seattle area right now, so we're just not really, we can do engineers' estimates all day for these projects, but until the bids come in, you don't exactly know what it's going to cost. So our guidance from the city manager and what we've been doing with our design team is to be very, very conservative with our cost estimates.
Good. Thank you.
And it's going to change greatly by the time we get to 60%, right? Or 90%?
Well, we'll see how it goes. 30% is our first good number. It's, you know, our number from before was at 0% design. So we know more and more. Yeah, don't say that. Please don't say that.
Councilmember Smith. No, I'm saying that number could go back down to 20. 20 million total cost. It could go to 40 million. Who knows?
Yeah, if we have another recession.
Councilmember Smith?
If, if the discussion next week on the components for potential cost reductions, in that discussion, I can't recall, are you wanting a definitive answer on that day? Or is that just a discussion about where we kind of think of areas we can cut? Because if we're just kind of discussing and that there's nothing concrete, then maybe it's best to stick with these, these numbers until we have more firm data.
We have a list of, should we want to reduce the scope of the project? We have specific recommendations with cost estimates included. And we would like council's guidance because if we're making changes to the bridge structure or other things, now is the time to make those decisions. So we, we will have a list of recommendations and kind of tell you where that, you know, we think we should save this much because we think we can get this much in the grant. So it's, we would like some good guidance on what's palatable to reduce at this time.
I mean, it seems like that it almost makes sense to stick with this because we don't, it could easily be at this level depending on where we go. And until we have further design, we're not going to really know maybe what some of those costs are going to be anyways.
So you're saying that even if you do make some
Yeah.
reductions next week, you're saying still keep it at 30.6?
Well, I guess it is only one week away, so maybe that's, there's no reason not to wait, you know, just one week. But it does seem like it would be best, since everything appears to cost more the following month than the month before, and without a doubt, the following year than the year before. And I remember even the, the built-in with the 12% on the two years for inflation. But it's still, it just seems like I would rather plan a little higher than lower.
Chris, another possibility for next week is council, in addition to just recommending cuts from the menu of choices, they could also have certain things be bid alternates, right? Can you talk a little bit about that and what a bid alternate is?
Usually have your main schedule, which is your project bid items, one through however many, and then you can have an alternate where you can have something that the contractor can bid on. And if you like that price, then you can include it in your project. I've had mixed results with, you know, additives or alternates because a contractor knows you really want them, you just don't know if you can afford them. But that is a tool that we can use if we're really, the bid climate, I think it's going to really fluctuate, and we really want to hit our bid window of the fall of 2018 to get the absolute best bids possible. On a project of this size, you can see a bid fluctuate millions of dollars depending on the time of year you bid.
Is there, is there a benefit from, because we know we're going to be looking at alternative sources for outside dollars to close this gap, is there a benefit to having the higher dollar amount in the planning document rather than cutting it sooner?
We are going to want to have a cost estimate that we can achieve. So we have one grant left that we, we believe we can get a significant amount of resources from, but we aren't going to be able to get everything we need. So when you look at the documents for next week, you'll see, here's what we think we can get from that program. We need to come down a little bit. It's still early. We're at 30%. So we know we're conservative. We know there's another program that we believe we would be successful in, but only one.
So then could I maybe suggest what we do is maybe we wait until after Monday's discussion, and then if we reach agreement on definitive not-tos or takeouts out of the proposal, then maybe we can just reduce the bid by that amount with the contingencies and all the built-in percentages with that, and then use that as the planning document number?
Because maybe to better answer, more specifically answer your question, if, our grant would be due in August, and it's not that far away. We're working, we're kind of working on it already. And our planning documents and our budgets have to be in line with what we tell the grant agency we're asking for. And so if our project costs are too high, we can only ask for X amount to be successful in a grant, we think we're going to have to show that supplanted with city money then. So I think it's better to have the accurate number based on where we're at when we apply.
So are you at a time disadvantage if we wait one more, one more week and then we adjust it based on the, the outcome of next Monday's discussion?
I think we're fine. They're due in August.
Okay. We'll move to the next project then, which is the Neighborhood Transportation Improvement Project, which was the allocation of funds for traffic calming and pedestrian bike improvements. We had $110,000 over two years for those improvements. And our traffic engineers indicated that in order to, to build or finish all the improvements that are scheduled, another $15,000 is needed, and that would be from real estate excise Any, any questions on this particular project? Okay, great. We'll move into the, the park projects then. Twin Springs interim use plan. This is kind of becoming two, two projects now, but I've still got it under P1, the original title. So we have $40,000 budgeted this year for an interim use plan. And as we prepare to go out for grant funding for future improvements, we realized that we needed some additional money for staff and consulting time. So an additional $25,000 is requested in this biennium for that effort. And then what we did was we put some improvements out in 2020, kind of as a placeholder, 1.1 million, hoping to fund those improvements possibly with a combination of grants and city funds. So that is how this project is structured at this point. The only impact on the current biennium would be the $25,000, and then the 1.1 million would be out in the next biennium.
I just want to say thank you because Twin Springs, to me, was, felt like the orphan park, you know? It's the park that didn't have any funding. So the idea of having some staff time and resources to look for grant funding and then actually, even if it is a placeholder, putting that in there, I think, I think it just shows there's, that we're valuing the park. Because, you know, that is an area that has lots and lots of new homes, new yards, lots of kids. I mean, we need a park that works.
Thanks. And I do want to manage expectations on this. This is at not even 0% design. If there was a negative percent design, I would say that. But this 1.1 million is really, given that, given the fact that we know nothing about what's going to happen at this park, this 1.1 million really is just a placeholder number right now. And you think that, you would think that 1.1 million would buy you a lot. It doesn't anymore. 1.1 million will do the basics to just get the park open at a minimal level, like drainage and parking. So I just don't, don't think that the 1.1 million's going to buy you a lot. It's not. It's just going to buy you some minimal things to get the park opened.
And you named that park, Lori.
I just repeated the historic name. I mean, we can't call it Portal Brightwater Sewer Treatment Plan. I don't know. We got a new...
I hope not. Councilmember Duduski?
For the potential grant 500K, was that always in the CIP that a big chunk of it would be grant? Or before this amendment, was it actually funded with city money?
Before this amendment, there was no funding for improvements.
At all.
At all.
Thanks.
Sure.
Councilmember Curtis?
Just a comment. I mean, this seems like sort of an independent project that if some other expenses come up, that this needs to be delayed, it'd be easy enough to push it out a couple of years. So once we have some design and stuff done, we can see it in the light of the whole city's budget if we have to do some moving.
And 2020 is, you know, outside the current budget, so we've got some time to figure that out. We have a master plan, though, don't we? Or some sort of plan? Working on one. We're working on one. The next project is the Tolp Pipeline, Tolp Pipeline Trail Phase One. So this is, this is a good news amendment. I don't, we don't always amend our projects and reduce the cost, but this one... I don't, we don't always amend our projects and reduce the cost, but this one is finished under budget. So we are going to recommend amending the CIP for that and reutilizing those funds. So it's essentially complete except for some signage, and it came in under budget by about $80,000. And it was funded with King County Trail Levy Funds. Okay. P six, Morelands Park. This is now under construction, which is very exciting, although it's taken a bit of maneuvering to get there. In February, there was a, the city council received information, approved a potential budget increase of about $413,000 when you decided to fund that for the under drainage of the outfield. I remember that the drainage was an issue and we determined to go ahead and take care of that so that flooding would not be a problem. Then in June, council authorized the construction contract, and once again, bids came in high. At that time, we thought they were $161,000 over the engineer's estimate. However, it turned out they were actually $210,000 over the engineer's estimate. So that was unfortunate. But then the state capital budget included a $250,000 funding package for Morelands, which offset the city's use of funds. So we are only asking for $398,000 more real estate tax to completely fund this project going forward. So the revised budget at this point would be 2.19.
And when we refer to the capital budget, in this case, we should probably refer to it in the future tense because it has not yet been adopted by the state legislature. That said, our government affairs consultant in Olympia is telling us that it's looking good, that this 250,000 will be in the capital budget when it gets adopted.
Yes.
When.
So fingers crossed on that.
Yeah.
And then some, okay.
As a backup, you can tap into park impact fees or REIT in case that money from the state doesn't come through. But it's, like I said, it's looking good.
The next project is the Log Boom Park Pedestrian Bridge. And this doesn't require an amendment other than just to bring it forward into the 2017 time zone because we didn't spend all the budgeted funds in 2016. In fact, very few expenses came in last year, even though the project is now complete, we need to reestablish it in our current budget. So this is just a carryover of unspent funds, no additional funds requested. Next is the park project, which is Rhode Island Park Waterfront, our bond-funded project. Here again, we had unfortunate news with bid openings on June 19th. And this was a project that went to bid along with the Rhode Island float and the Squires Landing float. And on this segment of that bid, the bids exceeded our engineer's estimate by $248,000. So in this case, we would utilize additional bond funds for this project, which I think is funded at $750,000 currently. Any questions about that project?
Joanne, I think you're not only using additional bond funds, but you're also using additional county levy funds for this project. Am I correct on that?
No, this is entirely bond-funded.
Okay.
This was one of our, this was one of our bond projects, no levy funds.
Okay, maybe I'm thinking about.
The float.
Oh, that's right. They were all bid as one package, but right, it's separate. Okay.
Correct. But for these purposes, now we're keeping them separate for.
Okay, yeah, it's 18A is the next one.
Right. So the Rhode Island Park float, again, as Rob mentioned, was bid in conjunction with the larger waterfront project. And this bid came in $149,000 over our expectations, and we can fund that with King County Park Levy revenues. It's also funded with some park impact fees, but we had the King County Park Levy to utilize, so decided to do, to do that. So this is the float at Rhode Island Park.
The bid award for that is scheduled for your approval at your next council meeting for both Rhode Island and Squires floats and water walk.
Okay.
And if you approve the contract, construction on these, Rhode Island and Squires could be completed by the end of this year. And it's significant because this will be your first walkways and waterways project to go under construction. And because it's the first of the walkways and waterways projects, I'm thinking you need a good groundbreaking ceremony for this one. So.
Absolutely. Okay. And then that brings us to the St. Edward Ball Field Improvement Project, which this amendment would establish funding for that project, which has not yet been included in our capital improvement program. Going forward from 2017 through 2019, it's anticipated that the budget needs to be $4.9 million. We have been awarded an RCO grant of 750, a King County Recreation Grant of 611,000. We would utilize real estate excise taxes of 2.1 million, park impact fees of 314,000, $640,000 of Strategic Opportunity Fund, and $500,000 from the general fund. And on June 12th, I believe Rob reviewed the status of that project and some of these potential funding sources, which we've got here as Attachment Six.
Is the RCO funding, is that already in hand or is that contingent on the capital budget?
It's contingent on the budget.
Councilmember Curtis.
I guess my concern is using Strategic Opportunity Fund. I sort of see that fund as a special fund that you don't use up unless there's something really special, unique that comes up. Sort of a, I see it as short notice, kind of a year or so. We've been working on this for nine years, and I just don't see this as a strategic opportunity and a proper way to use those funds. I also see those funds could be an emergency that comes up. You know, some road slides down the hillside and it just needs to be fixed. So to use up that fund for this project, I don't know if it makes any difference if I don't like it, but I don't like it.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, that's really interesting, Councilmember Curtis, since you and I haven't talked about that. I was going to say the same thing. So one of the things about this project, and I had a conversation with Rob on Friday, because this is a project that's taking a lot of partnerships to make it happen. Obviously, you know, the state parks, we've gotten the RCO grants, the King County grants. And I feel like instead of just using Strategic Opportunities Funds, we would be better positioned to take advantage and continue to seek grants if we changed it to some kind of unsecured grant funding. And I know that when we had the conversation, Rob, you might have had something to add to it, or are we not quite there yet?
No, that's definitely something you as a council could do. You could, the approximately $600,000 that you have, that we are proposing from Strategic Opportunities, you could do what you just said and not take it from Strategic Opportunities and just have it as a line item that says unsecured grant funding. And then you could direct us to go after even more grant funds. Your conversation with me prompted me to ask the mayor a question, which prompted the mayor to have a discussion with King County Councilmember Rod Dambowski. Mayor, do you want to share that conversation?
Yeah, he indicated that the, the funding that we got from the.
King Dome.
King Dome money, yes. Would be ongoing, but on a smaller scale. So we could get it one more time, two more times, three more times, but it wouldn't be the 600 and some thousand dollars that it was. It would be a smaller amount.
That's still good news, though. That could be a several hundred thousand dollar phone call. Thank you.
But there would be other, also other pots of money that could become available from King County. So, you know, I certainly can see this as being unfunded with the understanding that we're going after these because we do have a good project. And I think there's, certainly Dambowski and others in the county do think it's a valuable project considering the state of disrepair and how it's unused now. So anyway, yes, Dambowski was encouraging.
May I, may I make a comment? When we submitted for the RCO grant, we identified the funded revenue sources. So if we now show portions unfunded, I'm not sure how that will affect the RCO grant. Debbie may want to elaborate on that.
No, I pointed that out to Joanne going, we do have to show the RCO, that there is, we have the funds available to, for the grant match. So it's just a question that we will need to address if we are showing part of the project unfunded.
Well, I would hate to lose that grant money because of some wording change. Because there's nothing to say that we can't go after grant money and reduce that strategic fund outlay if we're successful in getting other grant money. That at least this shows the RCO, that yes, we have it funded while we continue to go after money to do, to replace that strategic fund money as it comes in.
And the way we have scheduled the use of the funds over the 17, 18, 19 period is that we would use the city strategic op fund and general fund last. So I would recommend that you continue to show it funded and continue to pursue other funding sources, and then we could substitute as we move forward.
Yeah, I don't want to put that grant, that RCO grant jeopardy. Councilmember Curtis.
So if we chose not to use Strategic Opportunity Fund, could we use REIT or general fund or something else and then try to get grants to cover that? I just don't want to use Strategic Opportunity Fund for this project.
I have an idea to that direction. Joanne, could you show them Exhibit E, the park impact fee fund projection? So if you look at the bottom, you see ending cash balance, and it reaches its low point in 2020. That's, for a fund like that, that's still a good cushion. With these in and out funds, these in and out capital funds, I have no problem drawing them very down, close down to zero. Also, our projections on the actual revenues, I think, are conservative. So there's, there's some money you could tap into there. And then if you go to the REIT fund, which is Exhibit.
G.
G. You can see that drops down into the neighborhood of 281,000, but it builds back up quickly into the 1.5 million dollar range by 2022. So there's a little bit of a cash flow issue that I think is very manageable. But again, that's, that's also an in and out capital fund that I have no problem drawing down close to zero. So what I'm saying there, Councilmember Curtis, is I think if we wanted to be a little more aggressive on these two in and out capital funds, I think we could get pretty close to the $600,000 and not have to reach into the Strategic Opportunities Fund.
If I could respond to that, I would argue that with bids going up every time you turn around, to have money sitting doing nothing, I don't think makes sense. These funds, the goal of getting this money is to use them. And if they're projects we know we want to build at some point anyway, get them as cheap as we can, which is sooner than later, unless the world changes.
So you agree with what I'm talking about?
Right. I'd much rather do it that way and use these two funds up rather than the Strategic Opportunity Fund. I know it may be semantic, but it's an emotional semantic.
I think it is more than semantic. These are restricted capital funds that are for this use. Strategic Ops is unrestricted, general fund type money. So I guess, you know, you've always heard me say protect the general fund. Well, the Strategic Opportunities Fund is an extension of the general fund. So reaching to these restricted funds first, I think, makes sense.
Would you like to see that incorporated into this amendment then, to substitute out the Strategic Ops?
I would like that. So if we got a couple hundred from one spot and 400 from the other, we just about have it covered.
Okay.
I don't, is there any agreement? I mean, I'm just one opinion.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We got, Councilmember Duski.
I was just curious, out of all the fund sheets in here, you didn't include Strategic Ops. And I was wondering how much, taking all this out, what does that draw that down to?
I believe it dropped it down to about 600, between 600 and 700,000 dollars by the end of the biennium. I think there's 1.2 in there now, something like that. But I can bring that next time.
Can I ask something else on that exact thing? Wasn't there a, wasn't there a plan, if I recall, I don't have the numbers or anything, that, but there was a reimbursement of the Strategic Ops? That was part of the, the plan as well?
From sidewalks.
And so, what's that?
From sidewalks.
Is that what it was from? I couldn't recall what.
There is, there is a repayment plan.
I just remember there was a replenishment plan, and maybe if it's, if part of that replenishment is from REIT anyway, or some of these that we're just talking about.
It is.
Then maybe it does make more sense just to, rather than.
There is a repayment plan from REIT. It's actually in part, in this budget this year.
Yeah, I just don't.
You can see that in Exhibit G as well, that repayment. But in what the, what the practice has become with the Strategic Opportunities Fund is at the end of the year, the general fund comes in better than budgeted. And so we take that windfall, if you will, and we have been paying back the strategic opportunities with that windfall. We're not proposing to do that this time around because we're proposing to take that windfall and send it straight to parks.
So is there any objection then to looking at those other couple of sources to make up that strategic? Nigel, you're shaking your head.
I understand there's no objection.
No objection. Okay.
How you heard the question?
Are there any, as long as we make it up from somewhere so that the RCO grant is not in jeopardy?
I just have one more question.
Yes, please.
Do we feel like we have a decent amount of padding in this project? Everything is up, 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 and we're drawing things down, 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 and we don't have a lot of room to wiggle ourselves out of things anymore.
You know, I wish I could answer that definitively, but we are in such a hot, high demand market right now. And we're, you can see this in all the projects we're talking about except for Tolp. But, so the demand for contractors is just way up right now, and that's driving up costs. So if you, Chris pointed this out to me, but if you look at all the public projects alone that are going on in the region, so Connecting Washington, Sound Transit, Two and Three.
Seattle.
The Seattle's billion-dollar package that they just passed.
One center city, yeah.
One center city. And then if you look how aggressive Kenmore and all of our surrounding cities are being when it comes to capital right now, it is really putting a huge pressure on the supply side, which, as you know, drives up costs. So this project has contingency built into it. Does it have enough contingency? I don't know.
Okay.
So how much more contingency should we be building into it? I, I don't know.
Is there a, looking at all our other ones that are over, over the engineer's estimate, is there a?
A pattern we can learn from?
A percentage of overage, or is it just kind of random?
Debbie, do you have any thoughts?
There are a lot of factors that affect the cost coming in high. It can be when you bid, it can be the bid climate, it can be a lot of things. And I don't know if there's something that we can see a true pattern in because all these projects are very different as well, so it's hard to compare apples to apples. So, I'm sorry, I wish I had a good answer for you, but I really, I really don't. Chris, unless you've got any words of wisdom? I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, part of our challenge always is, is especially, I'm thinking sidewalk projects specifically, we're applying for grants at 0% design. We aren't an agency that is designing everything we're interested in to 30%, where you have a much, you have your survey, you know what your right-of-way needs are. 30% is when you get a much better number. And, you know, we apply for a lot of our projects at zero, and then, if we need more, we try to get more as we go. Our, you know, our commitment is to always talk about cost to complete. You know, at 0%, we apply for grants, we say, here's what we think the whole thing's going to cost, everything. And we do include contingency, but when you get to that 30%, you know, for example, our 62nd Avenue sidewalk, we ended up having to build a retaining wall because a neighbor ended up all of a sudden having a failing slope. That wasn't, you know, we just, we have to do those things, and you can't plan for them. We can overall agree, we want to use a lot more contingency, we could do that. You know, Rob has been really good. We've, you know, been building in a lot more contingency than we used to. The bridge is a great example. But it's just always the challenge of trying to apply for money. And then, grants, you can only get so much. We're very strategic, and we're very good at getting grant money, but we go into grant applications going, okay, this is as much as they're going to give us. This is the grant agency's appetite for a size of an ask. So, it's always the push and pull. It's early in the project, they're only going to give us so much. We know we can afford to put in X, so we do the best we can, but it's not until you get 30% or more when you get a number that I'm more comfortable with. But then, you don't want to start plugging money into projects that you might never get a grant for. So, it's just a constant.
In the ballfields case, we're at a good level, percent level of design. What percent level of design are we at, Debbie?
We're probably more than 30, less than 60. I'm not quite sure what percentage I'd put us at, but we are getting ready for permit level submittals, so it's around, it's probably a little bit less than 60 at this point.
And we have, the landscape architect that's been working on that project, we have directed them to be very conservative in the costs, and we've had conversations about that.
We have, and we've tried to, you know, when we build a project budget, we try and consider everything. We throw everything in there we can think of, whether it's permitting, or, you know, percentage for the art, or whatever it might be, we try and come up with a complete project cost estimate.
I think we even have bat houses in that budget. So, bat boxes, I should say.
Bat boxes, yes. There's all kinds of things in there. So, we try and, you know, keep some kind of rules of thumb in there in terms of how much design cost should be as a percentage of the project. So, we try and keep, you know, a rule of thumb in there so that we ensure that there's still money left for construction. So, we're always mindful as we're, you know, moving forward with a project that we kind of, you know, look at the design cost, look at the construction costs, and all the other unrelated costs that add up to a total project cost as we go forward.
Also, in there, I think, is a conservative amount of money for the off-site improvements that State Parks is asking for. So, when I say off-site, I mean improvements to the grotto, to the historic orchard, to the nun's garden. And so, when people say it's a $5 million ballfield, well, there's actually a small portion of that that's going to off-site improvements, and those numbers seem to be pretty conservative, in my view.
I think we put in 200,000 as a sort of a, and it was really unknown at this point about what those costs would be. So, we have 200,000 in there for unrelated ballfield costs, but project-related in terms of things we'd have to do at the park.
Councilmember Curtis.
I can't remember at what point we actually vote on these to make them happen. Being in the CIP does not necessarily fund them, is that correct? So, it's when we get up to 90% design and then we say, go for it? Remind me the point that we actually vote on, yes, spend the money.
Well, that would be when you award the contract.
Okay, 100% design, we're ready to go, put it out to bid.
Right, the construction contract, when that comes to you after the bids.
I would say this, adopting the CIP does fund them and authorizes us to go out to bid, but you have the final say on whether to award the contract. But once you put it in the CIP, we feel like we have our marching orders to bring it to full design and take it out to bid.
But we wouldn't advertise something we didn't think we could afford without talking to council first.
And when the first two years of the CIP, then, are incorporated into the budget, that gives you the legal authority to spend that money. Okay. Anything else on the ballfield?
I think we've got it.
So, if I understand correctly, I'm going to find other sources of city funds to substitute in place of the Strategic Ops.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, a couple of things that...
Whatever I can find.
The city manager talked about.
That brings us to the last park project, which is a new contingent project, P-30, Rhododendron Park Boat House Pavilion. I'll let Rob talk more about this. This could be an interim boathouse, but he made it clear for purposes of this presentation that this is totally dependent upon funding from the state budget. No city money involved.
That's right. And like we mentioned earlier, the capital budget is not yet adopted by the state, but we understand that this is included in a draft version of the capital budget. And the idea would be to build a, kind of an open-air pavilion-style boathouse that would be within this budget and would get the high school rowing program up and running and give them a good home for the foreseeable future. I think, long-term, it would be nice for them to come up with funding, when I say "them," I mean the rowing community, to come up with funding for a real multi-bay enclosed boathouse somewhere along the Sammamish River, potentially even Lake Point. Until that day comes, I think this $250,000 version would be a good interim step for a few years.
Any questions before we move to surface water? Okay, thank you. That brings us to the last two projects, which are surface water projects. SW8 is the 190th culvert at 61st. This would be a new box culvert and related improvements near 61st and Northeast 190th. I failed to mention what the budget for this was, but we anticipated funding a 1.5 million dollar project with Public Works trust fund loans. This trust fund is just very uncertain. We continue to hold out hope that there will be funding available at some point, but it's not going to happen now, so we are just going to move that out another year, which means the project won't happen in that regard. And then, the repayments of that loan, should we have obtained it, would have been pushed out as well. So, I'm just moving that out to a future year. And...
I do have some hot-off-the-press news, though. The adopted budget does have a 1.5 million dollar loan for us for this project.
Oh.
Yeah, it was a surprise, last-minute surprise.
Does Zach know that? That's pretty...
I don't know. Yeah, so...
Okay, great. Well, shall I leave it out in the outer, move it out?
I think so, because for us to, I mean, we're halfway through 20.
By the time you apply for it and get the ball rolling. Okay, good news. And the second project is the 192nd Street Culver Replacement Project, which is an active project. It's replacing that existing culvert at Little Swamp Creek. On April 24th, you received information about the status of that project and that there could be a budget amendment necessary at that time. And now, that estimate for a budget amendment is $125,000 that we're requesting to complete that project with, funded by surface water fees. Any questions, surface water? Well, that concludes the projects that are proposed to be amended. I believe I understand how you'd like me to modify this going forward. I won't bring a budget, a CIP amendment next week until you've had your discussion on the bridge, and we'll go from there. And after that, then I'll know what you need for the CIP, that will drive what we need for the budget amendment, and we'll try and get that done by the 24th.
Also, regarding ballfields, the direction I'm hearing is leave no stone unturned on grants and be just aggressive about grants, whether it's Mariners' Grants, or Starbucks' Grants, or Little League Grants, or whatever, and really try to find more money in grants. In the meantime, though, use other capital funds to fund the ballfields instead of going to Strategic Ops, so that we show it fully funded. But the idea, though, is to go after grants like crazy.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda becomes staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I just have one item, and that is tomorrow night at 6:00, there's a legislative event.
Stole my thunder. Right on, go ahead.
I'm...
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
To be continued.
Yes, our 46th District Legislative Delegation, all three of them are going to be here to give us a recap of this last legislative session and how it went. And we'll also be meeting our newest member of the House of Representatives. So, it'll be your chance to get to meet him and ask him questions. So, that'll be from 6:00 to 7:00. And City of Lake Forest Park is going to be joining us, and so, their city council members will also be here. So, oh, one more thing. We've been meeting with Sound Transit regarding Sound Transit 3, Bus Rapid Transit, and they need direction from us on where, on what, let me back up a little bit. In, in the BRT project that's for the 522 Bus Rapid Transit, they have identified a parking garage as part of the project in Kenmore, a 300-car parking garage. They're going to be going through a siting study on where to put that parking garage, and that siting study will probably start in early 2018. They would like some guidance from us on where, on what potential locations for the parking garage should be. And so, at an upcoming city council meeting, whether it's later this month or early fall, I'd like to just have a brief discussion with you on what, what are the potential siting options for a parking garage? I think there's two obvious ones. One is the existing Park and Ride there near 73rd Avenue and Botha Way. Another potential one is Lake Point, incorporating it into Lake Point. But if there's another location that we haven't thought of or that you think is worth looking into, I'd like you to be thinking about that and for you to give us some direction that we can then give to Sound Transit on siting options for a parking garage for Bus Rapid Transit. So, be thinking about that, and in an upcoming council meeting, I'll be asking for your direction on that.
All right. Councilmember Sperry, you had a question?
I did, actually. Going back to the legislative debriefing, I'm not sure. A lot of times, you know, we kind of start out informal and kind of mingle. Do you have, do you know, I know this just came up really quickly. Do you know the format, what we're going to be doing?
I think the format is going to be pretty similar to what we've had in past years, probably 10 minutes or so of informal time, and then, the two mayors would convene the meeting and presentation from, from the legislators, and then questions. So, it's, I think it's going to go pretty quickly because it's an hour total, so...
That's why I was asking. Yeah.
So, I would say if you come, we need to get together with Lake Forest Park Council. We need to meet in one big group, and we need to plot the overthrow of the regions. If you guys want to, want to show up, then that would be great. All right. Comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Januski.
Nothing, Deb.
Councilmember Herbig.
Nothing.
Councilmember Curtis.
I enjoyed the first movie in the square.
That good.
I thought it was a good turnout, and I expect as it, as we keep doing it, more and more people will come out, and the food was great, too.
Councilmember Sperry.
The fireworks were awesome.
Pardon?
The fireworks were amazing.
They were, weren't they?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith.
I'd just like to congratulate our city manager on summiting. And as, as one who has dawned the rope and the crampons and the ice axe before, I can appreciate the hard work, and I think that is really cool. For the, oh, I'm talking about the summiting of Rainier.
Oh, thanks, yeah. And you actually summited Rainier up a harder route than I did, so congratulations to you. You did the Emmons Glacier, which is much more fraught with crevasses, so hats off to you.
That's all. Deputy Mayor.
I don't have anything tonight, other than the Fourth of July, the movies, the fireworks display seem to get better every year. I had a chat with Leslie about it last week, and I don't know how, it gets better without us investing more money in it. It's really great, and she's done a great job with the sponsorships for all of our events. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Concerts underway. Great concert last Thursday, last Thursday night, and looking forward to the next one. It was good bluegrass. We had, I don't know, quite a big crowd. It was, it was pretty impressive for the first, for the first concerts of the year, so I was quite pleased. Not much going on, summertime, so that's it, unless there's any other business come before. Don't forget the 17th. I will be going, the city manager asked me to go to Spokane on a family court fact-finding mission, and I'm going with our judges and our prosecuting attorney, so...
And public defender, too.
And public defender, too.
I'm not sure. They, they just, the court has, the presiding judge has asked that we go and learn about it, so...
So, we're going and learning about it. So, I will not be here next Monday. I will be on my way back. It ends at 2:00, and if I can get back here, I will. Otherwise, Deputy Mayor will be, will be running the meeting. Yes, and other than that, we are adjourned.